Was that a COVID call?
Sorry, everyone, I'm still trying to figure out this YouTube. Something's happened with the password, so one second.
So Dave, Ron and Gina Eaton are hosting us tonight.
Okay.
Ron said hi.
Okay.
And they're going to take us out on a boat cruise of Mount American Lake after this meeting.
So you want this meeting to end short, is that what you're saying?
That's why he wanted to tell you hi.
Tiffany, let's see if we can drag this meeting out for a couple of hours minimum.
Yeah, thanks. Well, we're just gonna put our name on there then.
All right, the meeting's being recorded, everyone. We're not live on YouTube unfortunately because a password has changed and I don't have access to the new one, so it'll go up online tomorrow. So if any members of the public happen to be listening this evening, please be aware, and you'll see this tomorrow, but that this is something that we hadn't anticipated and this recording will be on the YouTube site for City of Lakewood starting Thursday, September 3rd. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order this Planning Commission this September 2nd, 2020. If staff could call roll, please.
Don Daniels.
Present.
Connie Coleman Lackady.
Here.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
James Guerrero.
Here.
Paul Wegman.
Present.
Nancy Hudson-Echols.
Present.
You have quorum, Chair.
Great, thank you. Before us, we have the minutes of July 15th, 2020. Looking for a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Wegman made a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Guerrero, any comments, changes? Hearing, seeing none at this time. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Oh, thank you, Connie. Hearing none at this time. The minutes approved as written, thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, was there any written comments on public comment?
I have not received any.
Okay. Seems that we haven't received any public comment, we'll close the public comment at this time. Unfinished business, it looks like we have none, and there's no public hearing, so we move right to number eight, new business, the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket list introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening again, everyone. I'm going to share my screen, so give me just one second. Oops, there we go. So, as was just mentioned, this is the introduction to the Planning Commission of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan MAP and Text Amendment Cycle. As you know, we start in one year at the fall, and then by next summer, the city council will take action on this item, which is why it's called the 2021 cycle, even though it's beginning here in September of 2020. There, the process is laid out in state law as well as city code. In addition to the review by Planning Commission, there are some other reviews that have to occur as well. The SEPA review that will be conducted by the Community and Economic Development Department, the Department of Commerce does a review, and then there's public hearings and action at both Planning Commission and City Council levels. Where we sit right now is the third step down out of this. You've got the public call for applications closed last Friday. We did not receive any applications, so this year, the cycle will only be city-initiated items. On August 24th, so two weeks ago, two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, the city council had a preliminary review of the list that you're viewing tonight, and they had the opportunity to add or edit what was brought to you, but they did not do any changes, so what you're seeing is what they saw as well. Tonight is the review and initial discussion of the docket list, and then two weeks from tonight, there will be a public hearing held at the Planning Commission on the proposed docket. And again, this is the high level, these are the items that are going to be included, but you won't have all the detail in front of you tonight or two weeks from now for that matter, you'll have more, but it won't be the fully fleshed out everything yet. But that hearing will happen on the 16th, and then October 21st is the date that you're scheduled to take action on the docket. The reason you see a jump from September 16th to October 21st is October 7th, there will not be a Planning Commission meeting because of the city council's process to review the budget, so there will not be a meeting on the 7th. Once the Planning Commission takes action on October 21st, it'll move forward to the city council, and again, this is all review of just the list of items, this is not the substantive review of any of these amendments. So November 23rd, the council will review whatever list the Planning Commission forwards to it, and then on December 7th, they're scheduled to take action to approve that docket. Assuming that happens, then we get into the actual substantive review that'll take a few months, so winter into spring of next year, that's what the city will be doing, and then next spring, this list will come back to you, fully fleshed out, with the SEPA review included, as well as any comments that might have been received from outside agencies. And then in the summer, you're scheduled to take an action on the full amendment list, and then it will go forward to the council after that. So by next June, July, the city council will be taking action on the 2021 packet. So as I mentioned, there were no privately initiated amendments this year, so what we have are seven city-initiated amendments to date, and then, one more time, there'll be an opportunity for the city council to add to the list by December 7th when they take action to approve the docket. So I'm going to go through each one of these in relatively high-level discussions, but please, if there's anything you want more in detail about, both Mr. Bueller and I are here to help answer what we can. So the first amendment is just called the replacement of the sustainability chapter with a new energy and climate chapter within the city's comprehensive plan, and this is actually being funded by a grant that the city was awarded. There were only five awarded statewide, and Lakewood succeeded in getting one. So what you see here for most of this slide are the outline subchapter titles for this new comp plan chapter. You'll see, as it's laid out mostly like the other chapters are, so beginning with the purpose and then the regulatory context behind the need, in this case, for an energy and climate chapter. The impacts to climate change, not only in the Puget Sound, not only in Pierce County, but specific to the city of Lakewood. Then we're hoping to be able to use the lion's share of the funds that were received by the grant to hire a consultant to do a greenhouse gas emission inventory for Lakewood, and then we would provide any key findings or recommendations coming out of that inventory. And then there's going to be policies and programs, some of which the city has already done, and so that big paragraph in the middle of the slide lists all of the things that the city of Lakewood has already done to address and anticipate additional climate change. And then at the bottom there, you see there'll be a summary of implementing actions going forward. As you know, the comp plan is a 20-year horizon document, so there's generally short, mid, and long-range term items that will be added as well. So any questions on that one? All right.
I'll ask a question.
Mr. Wegman.
Yeah, so what's the position of the city on global warming anyhow? Where are we at? Who runs that and who decides where we go?
I don't know, Mr. Bueller, if you want to add anything, but from my understanding, there has been recent changes in state law that requires these things to come into comprehensive plans here within the next few years, and the reason Lakewood is doing this now is because there's money available through a grant to do the work, but eventually, the city would have had to do this in any event. So, Mr. Bueller?
I would say that the general city is fairly silent on the subject of climate change. You had, you did adopt a sustainability chat several years ago, and the purpose behind that really leads to satisfy the regional councils, we could obtain transportation
Mr. Bueller, you're cursed because you started to do a, you know, same situation as before.
Okay, and I'll summarize what Mr. Bueller said. First of all, that the sustainability chapter that's currently in the comprehensive plan was adopted in order to satisfy requirements from the Puget Sound Regional Council, but there are these changes that are now by state legislative action requiring a beefed-up climate change stuff that's now being required of the cities within the next few years, and so we're just taking advantage of an available grant in order to do this work a little early.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, go ahead, Tiffany.
All right, thank you, sir. So coming back into our... The next couple of amendments are pretty self-explanatory, and I think most of them actually relate to work that the Planning Commission has done. So the second one is to simply update the references to the Springbrook area to reflect the fact that in this year's comp plan packet, so the one that was adopted by council in summer 2020, rezoned a number of Springbrook parcels to industrial. So if you remember, this one kind of sat around for a full cycle because there was a weight on the city's action to update the flood mapping within the Springbrook area to see if it made sense to do rezoning up or down in intensity, or simply call certain parcels unbuildable because of flood risk. And long story short, the city council took action and went ahead with the industrial zoning, and with the understanding that any development within this area would have to comply with floodplain regulations. So that was done, but the comp plan now needs to be updated in order to reflect that, so whether it's the map itself, or there's policy language throughout that refers to Springbrook as actually a center for residential high-density development, which is now out of date, so we'll need to update that. The third one is to show that the 2020 Parks Legacy Plan has been adopted, which was just done a few months ago, so we're just updating, similar to the Springbrook action that the council took. The fourth one is a kind of a catch-all bag of housing-related updates. So there are a variety of things that have changed at the state law level, and also the regional guidance and policy level that the city needs to comply with. So referring, for instance, to transitory accommodations, that is related to shelters, for instance, hosted by churches or other organizations, tent cities sort of thing, accessory dwelling units and where they can be built, and then just the general idea of missing middle housing, so making sure that the city's comprehensive plan policies are all reflective of these recent updates. And I'm stopping again here, I don't know, oh, Mr. Bueller has left, so.
Nope, I see no other questions.
Okay.
I'm back.
Okay, okay, did you want to say anything about transitory accommodations?
It's a strange law that was adopted by the legislature this last session, it doesn't really fit within the construct of our current zoning code. I had extensive conversations with the legal department as to how to proceed. What we are planning to do is adopt the legislation by reference and link it directly into our zoning code. And from there, we would just indicate that the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the religious institution would be under my signature with appeal rights to the city's hearing examiner, and then call it quits. It's a very unusual law, I don't think that most churches are going to, or religious institutions are going to use it. They are required to carry liability insurance, for example, they are required to meet all of the state's criteria for access, and they would be allowed to have sex offenders within their facility. There's also a different set of standards for comment and review, it's very short, you have about five days to respond to any questions or comments regarding the facility. It doesn't fit with any zoning regulation that anyone has, frankly, and so rather than try to adopt some regulations and try to interpret what the state has done, a better course of action is just, hey, this is what you adopted, and this is how we plan to implement it based upon the legislation. The way it would work is the city would enter into a memorandum of understanding with the church, outlining the uses that would be allowed per state law, and then try to negotiate for other things that were not necessarily within state law, but hopefully things to which both parties could agree. I know this sounds a bit strange, but it is, and it's very complex. The legislature seems to be quite proud of themselves, but I see this as being a bit of a difficulty for municipalities and counties to implement, and rather than try to develop an entire code to fit the criteria established by the state, the thought would be, we would just adopt the code by reference and link it from the state's legislative documents into the city, call it quits.
Sounds good.
Is that a good explanation?
Yeah, it's good, it's good explanation. Any questions? Seeing none, all righty, continue.
All right, thank you. So that is referring to the number four, it will include a number of different things, as I mentioned, all related to housing and trying to find the ability to provide more affordable housing within the city of Lakewood. The fifth one is, again, picking up pieces after other action might be taken either this year or maybe next regarding Western State Hospital, and then also more generally public and semi-public institutional uses. As you may be aware, right now, the city is in the process of reviewing an update to the Western State Hospital's master plan, and the way it's being proposed is a significant reorganization, some demolition, some new construction on the Western State Hospital campus, and so that all will need to be reflected within the comp plan. There's going to be some changes, as the city understands, to the types of patients that are housed there, the number of patients that are housed there, and then the connections or transportation paths around the master plan, so all of that will need to be updated within the comp plan. And so that's going to be one of those that's kind of moving along as time goes by. Hopefully by next spring, we'll be at the point where we can actually draft all that language and bring it to you, we think we'll be able to, but it might be a moving target as we go into next spring. Somewhat similar to that is the Lakewood Station District subarea. The downtown subarea has already been adopted, obviously, you guys took your action almost two years ago now, and the Lakewood Station District is scheduled for adoption no later than the week before Memorial Day of next year, per the grant that's funding the process, but both of these subarea plans need to be reflected within the comprehensive plan. So the idea here, again, is to update text and policies to reflect that those have been adopted. So any questions on any of those?
Seeing none, continue on.
All right. The very last one we're going to talk about is a little more involved, so bear with me here. The comprehensive plan right now has eight, what are called, centers of local importance, and what that is, is a small, relatively small portion of the city, and they're scattered across, you'll see a map in a minute of where they're located if you're not familiar with them, and some of them are related to industrial development, some of them are residential, as I mentioned, Springbrook a little earlier in the meeting, some are open space, so like Fort Silicon, for instance, but they're all little centers in the city for various reasons. And what is being proposed here is to take two of them, which are numbered four and five, and get rid of those current ones and create a new one, all of which would be focused on industrial development. And part of that is just to bring some more unity to what's going on in the part of the city, these two current areas are pretty much next to each other, but it's also to qualify eventually to be a county-wide center that then in turn allows the city of Lakewood to seek a whole new bucket of transportation funding. So it's a process, A, to update and make more consistent the type of development planning that's going on on the east side of the city, but B, it's trying to open up a new funding opportunity for the city for transportation over time, as well as other economic activities, because if you have one of these centers identified and it becomes regionally recognized, which is the intent here, then other economic development grants and those sorts of things become available as well. So just as an idea for the type of money we're talking about, for this round of county-level funding that occurred that right now Lakewood couldn't compete for, for any of its projects, you had about four and a half million for preservation, like chip ceiling, striping, that sort of thing, 3.4 million for non-motorized, so trails, other pedestrian access to places, that sort of thing, you had transit dollars, you have roadway dollars, and then the small cities. So again, this is a choice of the city to try to open up a way to access these funds. So here you see a map now of the current Centers for Local Importance, or of local importance, down in Woodbrook, over in... I'm going to lose the number, Tillicum, sorry. Number six is the one that's in Springbrook. Eight is Lake City, I believe, if I can move myself out of the way, there we go, yeah, Lake City West. Number two is Fort Silicon, number three at the top, Custer Road Walmart area, and then here's where we're talking about, is four and five. Right now, number four is the Clover Park Technical College coupled with the Lakewood Industrial Park, that's in this yellow, almost a square, and then number five is the corridor of South Tacoma Way, and then a couple of little offshoots off of that, and it's an area that's been identified for commercial development, and it includes within it what's called the International District within the city. And as you see here, what you've got within those areas are industrial-zoned lands, open space and recreation, commercial, central businessistic, and public institutional, so that is what all of the zoning is within these areas. The idea, as I mentioned before, would be to combine these two centers for local importance and create a single new one that's really focused on industrial development and planning. It would encompass parcels that are zoned industrial, industrial business park, commercial two, air corridor one and two, public institutional and neighborhood commercial. So what are we talking about? This is the map, and so as you can see, this is what is currently COLI number four, that yellow square we were just looking at, and this orange is what is number five. And so what this map shows you is that both of those are rolled into this, as well as right in between them, the industrial development and zoning all down Lakeview Avenue up to Durango, and then you also see the two purple shades here, these are air corridors one and two, and if you remember, this is the stuff that's affected by McCord Field, right down here is the clear zone for McCord Field, and so within these two colored areas, you've got various restrictions of what type of development can happen. The residential development within these areas is non-conforming, it's legal, but it's non-conforming, and so over time, the idea would be that these would become more industrial in nature because that's less dense and the risk of safety issues from flights coming from Fort, sorry, from McCord Field is lower. So if you put that in context with the rest of the city's outline and where the other centers for local importance are, this absorbs again number four and number five, and then adds the additional area off to the east. I'm calling it East City right now, just as a placeholder, that's by no means the final answer, but that is, that is the proposal, is to have a new Center for Local Importance right there. One more map to look at, this is the city overall and its zoning, this here in red, that's the downtown subarea, that outline, and it is all Central Business District, about 95% of the zoning there. Right down here, this triangle is the Lakewood Station subarea, which is getting planned right now, that subarea plan's being developed, and then adjacent to the two of these, so right here is downtown, right here is Lakewood Station, this here is the map that I was just showing you in bigger, this would be this industrial area, and so it is significantly larger than both of the two subareas we've talked about so far, but this is the idea to create first a locally designated and then seek county-wide recognition of the center in order to qualify for transportation dollars. When we took this to the city council, there was one question about the fact that this COLI would include the International District along South Tacoma Way, and whether there would be a negative effect on that International District. Right now, the way we've responded to the city council is that the fact that an industrial Center for Local Importance has been designated does not change the zoning of any parcels or the designation of an International District or anything else unless the city council took additional action on top of creating the Center of Local Importance. So it would be yes within it, as you can see, this is the area we're talking about for the International District, is along here, but nothing would change within this area with this idea of creating the larger Center of Local Importance. Next steps, really quickly before I stop sharing, as I mentioned, two weeks from now will be a public hearing on the docket, and then October 21st would be when the commission would take action, unless they need longer, and then November 23rd is the date for the city council to take this up, December 7th, if they take action on the docket, then city staff would take it from there and begin the preparation for the full review starting next spring. So, Mr. Chair, turning it back to you for questions or discussion.
Great. Any discussion questions for staff? Seeing none, good job, seeing none, Tiffany. So that completes that report, I appreciate it. And our council liaison, Mr. Bokey is not in the audience, so.
No.
Nothing from him, so we'll just, any other reports from staff?
I don't think so, as I mentioned before the meeting's starting, I'll do it again here on the record, the city is still seeking applicants for the open position on the Planning Commission, so if any of you or any members of the public are interested in that, you can go to the city's website to find information about the position and the forms to fill out and submit those back in, and then the council will take action once they have that additional number of people who might apply.
Great. Any other shared information by fellow commissioners? Anything? Mr. Wegman?
I think Ryan has something to share with us tonight.
Oh, Mr. Pearson.
Aren't you going to tell us some good news?
Oh, we're having our baby, is that?
Oh, congratulations.
You know, helping the population of Lakewood.
Make sure, hurry's up and get on the census, right?
Yeah. Yes, we are.
Oh.
Congratulations.
And I only had, I have one other question.
Sure.
Nancy and Connie must be on a big screen because they got to be six feet apart, right?
We are.
Notice that, they speak in unison as well. Right, so. Right, so.
You and Nancy Pelosi, yeah, Connie.
We don't hide it.
Yeah. Any other questions by staff, to staff? Hearing or seeing no questions, we will call the meeting of the planning commission adjourned. Thank you.
To our cruise around American Lake.
Well, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.